Convene this meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. Begin with the announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the Chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the Director of Community Development and Planning, pursuant to the Open Meeting and Public Records Law. All documents shall be part of the official record of the meeting. Is there anyone here recording tonight who would like to identify themselves to the Chair? Hearing none, we'll move on. First item of business, approval of minutes for our February 20th meeting.
Ten minutes.
Was there a motion? I'm sorry.
I'll second it. He made the motion.
Motion made, seconded, to accept the February 20th meetings. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cormier.
Yeah, I had brought up the point on the alley going down rear, Main Street, and for the lighting. And they was told to us that they were gonna put, and I'm not no lighting expert, they were gonna put string lighting going across the buildings going down from Main Street down to Derby, Derby Park. I'm just questioning if that lighting is gonna illuminate that enough? Or is there provisions made in case that's not enough lighting? You can see this, you know, they got apartments coming up downtown. You're gonna have children, mothers with groceries, they're gonna be parking back there. Going up the alleyway, I'm not too sure if those string, they look nice, those decorative lightings that's gonna go back and forth, stringing. And I'm not too sure if that's gonna be lit enough. And maybe, I know we had voted, they got some other stuff to do. I'm just wondering if you should make provisions just in case that's not enough lighting going in that alley.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
Right now, you're voting on the minutes, as they are. And if you have any amendments to the minutes you wanna make, you can bring them to the floor. Otherwise, I would just take the vote. And that site plan's been approved by the Board.
Yes.
So it's not on our agenda tonight for discussion. So maybe we can have that discussion outside of the meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up just in case.
And I can refer that back to the meeting.
Because even at that meeting we had, there was some other stuff that, it was public restrooms that was on there, that wasn't gonna be on there. We discussed that again. But yeah, so I guess if we can vote on that and we can discuss this after. That's fine.
Yeah, we'll discuss that offline.
Sure.
All right, anything else? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We have no new business?
None.
On the agenda? None from your side? All right, let's continue the public meeting for the definitive site plan for private oversight. Zero West Broadway for a 52-unit multifamily development. Do we have anyone from the applicant here tonight? Who would like to speak?
Yes, Trevor Fletcher, with Graz Engineering, the engineering firm. Get the plans up. First H and I, and seconds. Oh, it's not plugged in, that's why.
That helps.
Yeah, always. All right, so this is the project that was brought before the Board back, I believe in October was when we first convened, or it might've been September. It is right along the Gardner and Templeton Town Line off of West Broadway, right across from the Eames property, if you're familiar with the old house over there. The cul-de-sac that you see on the northern parcel there, that's Deer Hill Road. So this is the parcel just beyond that towards Templeton. And that is where we are proposing this development. And yeah, it's just another overview of the entire site. Deer Hill is, can you see my cursor? Can you see my cursor on there?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's Deer Hill right here, and then these are the parcels right here. The Templeton Town Line comes along this and then goes across like that. That's Kendall Pond over here, and then the center of East Templeton is down towards that area. So we submitted this plan back in September. We presented it once, so I'll just kinda give a brief overview of what we discussed at that meeting. We have received preliminary comments from the city engineer who reviewed it. I have not made any changes per those comments yet. We hit kind of a little bit of a delay. We needed some determination from the ZBA on some clerical issues that are gonna greatly affect the design, so we didn't wanna move forward with any revisions before that decision was made. So I'll kinda go through everything and I'll leave it where we left it last time. So this is the entrance to the property. It's relatively steep in the beginning, up here. Up in this area here, drainage is gonna be at the lower half of this slope right here, in this area. So everything from the front half of the development is gonna drain down into this infiltration basin prior to being discharged and joining in with the drainage that is in West Broadway already. All the drainage that we've calculated on-site is to meet all stormwater standards. It's going to meet the, it's gonna be, the peak flows in the 2, 10, 25, and 100-year storm are gonna be less than what they exist as, that is what stormwater regulations call for. In all impervious areas, pavement, sidewalks, anything like that, is gonna be treated to remove 80% of total suspended solids. And so, any drainage that you see on these plans is an effort to achieve that. And like I said, there's some changes that are gonna have to be made to the drainage calculations per the engineer's comments. So as we move into the site, off to the right, we have some mailboxes here and a couple spaces for residents to park and pick up their mail, and as well as dumpster area down here. So when residents have trash to take out on their way out, when they're gonna run errands, they can go and just drop off the trash in the dumpster. We figured this would be a good central location for everybody, 'cause it's the only way in or out of the development. Further up, all these shaded areas right here, these are raised crosswalks. That is in an effort to slow the traffic. As you'll see there, in this design, there are a couple of parking areas that require residents to back out into the central artery. And we wanted this central artery to kinda function as the center, two lanes of a parking lot. So we made the park, that lane 24 feet wide, just like it would be in a parking lot. And so, everything is just to make sure that everybody's going like 10 to 15 miles an hour in the development. So we implemented raised crosswalks. I'll point them out as we go up. The first one is at this location here. And then, right after that raised crosswalk, you have an offshoot to the left here. And there's two buildings, one five-unit and one six-unit right here. And there's eight spaces in front of each of these structures. And there's additional parking off to the right here. And we have swales and everything capturing all that drainage. So that's that portion of the development. Moving up, there's another three-unit building right off to the right here. And that has two spaces in front of each unit, so six in total in front of that townhouse building. And then, just past that, we have a larger parking area right here to accommodate for more residents and guest parking as well. And then followed by that is another raised crosswalk. There's numerous of these to keep traffic moving slower. And here's that same crosswalk right there. So moving on, we have two more buildings on either side of the road. The one on the north side of the road, that one's in Gardner, that is an eight-unit building. The one over here, this is actually the structure in Templeton, it's a ten-unit building in Templeton. So that's not going to be part of this approval. We'll have to go before the Templeton Planning Board to get those ones approved if the subdivision goes through. Likewise, in front of each of these structures, there's eight spaces in front of each one. And the rest is kinda green area with a couple plantings, which I'll show you in an isometric view afterwards. Right after that, we have another raised crosswalk right here, keep traffic moving slow again. And then we have a couple additional side parking spots right over here, and then a larger parking area down off to the left side of the road. And this building right here is a proposed office with an apartment above. I believe the intent is for a property manager to be the tenant of that apartment, so someone's always on-site if there's any issues with the site. And yeah, that office is to manage, I think rentals, or everything like that, rentals and that kinda sort of thing, because none of these things are gonna be for sale. I believe they're all rentals. And then, moving on, there's another parking area down to the south, another raised crosswalk. And then, at the end of the, this is kinda towards the end of the development, there's a five-unit building, two five-unit buildings, one right next to each other, and then another 10-unit building to the south. And likewise, each of these structures, all three of them have eight spots in the front, and that additional parking over here on the side, another raised crosswalk right there. And then this is the tail end of the development. This is the 10 units. That's the five-unit, five-unit. And then it goes into a cul-de-sac with a little bit of parking off to the south, and then a larger detention basin to capture the back half of the drainage, move it from the back half. So that is kinda the gist of the development. And I have one kinda another view to get a general feel of what it was gonna look like, rudimentary a little bit. So here's the road coming in here, here's the offshoot to the left for those two structures, the three-unit building here, additional parking kinda moving up. And as you can see, the intent is really to, you know, to keep as much green space as possible. Behind the buildings, we want, you know, each unit to have a little lawn area that they go outside and enjoy in the summer months, and, you know, have an area for any pets to go outside and everything like that. And yeah, so that's pretty much the gist of the development. The thing that we're asking for tonight, obviously there's some work to do per the engineer's comments, but we went through the ZBA, which Christine will have a big summary about. And the planning board is allowed to allow eight spots in front of each primary structure on the lot. So because it's an allowance, we kinda wanna determination on if you guys would allow the eight spots in front to maintain as much green area as possible, rather than trying to accommodate the regulation and have the parking in the back, which will create a lot more impervious area, in our opinion. And so I'll show you what we came up with for a rough design with the parking in the rear. So this is kind of an overview of the whole thing. So right here, you can see the building that's in Templeton. This would have to have an offshoot behind it, and this is all the parking in back that will be required to, you know, fulfill the whole development without doing any in the front. This whole area here is a little too steep, so we can't really get in the back of that. So we have to make it up in other places. And so, these two units right here and here have parking all in the rear. So, I mean, the back doors for each of these units is going to be entering into a parking lot. And then we had to push the buildings all the way up to the sidewalk, so you're kinda squished by pavement on one side and pavement on the other. That's why we believe that, you know, if you have the eight spots in the front, it'll save impervious area in the back end. And doing preliminary calculations, just the pavement costs, you're talking about 10% less pavement overall in the entire development if you have those eight spots in the front. And I didn't incorporate sidewalks, which if you have parking in the back, you're gonna have to have sidewalks all the way around the building. And so, it'd be a little bit more extra impervious there too. So probably talking about 10 to 15% more impervious with the parking in the back instead of the front. And yeah, so that's kinda where we were at. And so, we went back and forth with the ZBA as Christine Tree will go through and to kinda get their feel for it. And yeah, so does anybody have any questions on the initial spiel?
Anything from you? The Board is silent.
Waiting to hear the next chapter.
Mr. Cormier.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, he kinda almost made his point that he's slowing the traffic down because they're parking in the front. They're gonna be coming out to the main road. So that's why they're putting up those raised crosswalks to slow the traffic down to 5, 10 miles an hour. So he kinda made a point that, why we're suggesting putting parking in the rear for safety measures, obviously. So that's where I'm at right now.
Mr. Chairman, it's the first time I see this, so I'm not really prepared to comment on it at this point in time.
Okay. There's nothing further? Thank you.
Oop, I'm sorry, Christine.
That's okay.
That's you?
Yeah. It's not showing the screen, no. Wonder if I have to incorporate, this is a second display. So, I'm Attorney Christine Trees. Nice to see all of you again this evening. You all have not one but two shows to enjoy today. So I wanted Trevor to give an overview, 'cause it's been a while since we've been back here. We had hit briefly an issue on the parking that involved an interpretation of the zoning ordinance. We went to the ZBA to resolve that interpretation, and I'm gonna talk about that today, as well as what we're asking for. At this point, as Mr. Fletcher said, we need to resolve the parking issue before we can move forward to make the design completely responsive to DPW and other comments, because it is, it would change substantially if we did have to forego the eight spaces in front of the building. So this presentation tonight is geared towards asking you to, you know, not go to the final step of approving or disapproving the site plan review, but approving the positioning of eight spaces in front of each building. So that's what I'm looking for a resolution on tonight. Trevor's given us mostly an overview, but this is just a summary of how we got here. The applicant had applied for a use variance, which was denied. We had looked, and we had obtained a zoning map amendment, changing this area to GR3. After the zoning map amendment, we had gone through preliminary and started definitive review here, hit the zoning interpretation, went to the ZBA, who also requires a special permit for the multifamily use. Neither the ZBA nor I wanted to move forward on that special permit until the site plan issues were resolved. So we did ask them to make that finding. The finding was in our favor. It turns around the term of the use of the term "principal building." And the finding, which was supported by the city solicitor's opinion, was that we can in fact have more than one principal building on a single lot. So we are back here now for the implementation of that determination on the parking. I did put together a few overview slides, just where the parcels are. The starred parcels are the three subject parcels which have merged. This is just a history of how we got here. At the original application, the petitioner only owned the first parcel closest to the road, and that was the original project design. At the time of the zoning map amendment, this was the project design, as you can see, all the parking is in front of the buildings. And then this is the pretty landscaping overview of the proposed project today, which was given to you more detail than Mr. Fletcher. So this is the ordinance adissue. And this is regarding parking design. And it states generally that parking should not be located to the forward of any building front line, except that the planning board may grant permission to locate not more than eight parking spaces in front of the principal building. And that is based on the finding that the site layout was preferable, given that parking layout. So that is, in essence, what we're actually asking you to find today, is that the site layout is preferable with the parking in front of the building. I'm going to, just so everybody has a copy, hand out the determination from the ZBA on this issue. The building commissioner had issued an interpretation that you could only have one principal building per lot, and that therefore we could not proceed with the design because we had multiple buildings on the lot. And the ZBA, as I said, did find that we were able to have more than one principal structure.
Thank you.
The question is, where's the primary use being conducted? In your zoning ordinance, that is the definition of the principal building. And on the second page of the decision before you, you have the finding of the ZBA confirming that issue. So this does not constrain you. This is a decision within your discretion, based on that finding of the site layout being preferable. And the zoning board did want to ensure that they were not deciding this issue for the planning board, the project before them. So these three diagrams are in your zoning ordinance, showing a preferred layout, an acceptable layout, and a not acceptable layout. And this is kind of the origination of this suggestion that what we really wanna do is have parking in the rear of the building. I'm gonna go through, the alternative design was presented to you by Trevor. But as we look at it, these are the reasons why the original design is superior. The parking has been, from the original, redesigned so that 50% of the spaces have been moved out to separate lots. Speed bumps posted, speed limits have been inserted to make sure that traffic is calmed. We have raised pedestrian sidewalks. I think I stopped before I finished the word pedestrian, so I'm sorry for that. But the raised pedestrian sidewalks also provide a safe pathway for anyone who is walking. I also wanna emphasize that this is an access driveway. It is not a street. It is not a street. And so when we discuss parking on the street, backing out into the street, it's not a street, it's an access driveway. There is a buffer zone in between each space and the access driveway, so it's not at the end, right next to that access driveway. This layout is superior because it is more convenient for the residents by far. Each resident is going to have a parking spot directly in front of the entrance to their building, so that they can carry in parcels and other purchases. That's gonna be much more convenient for them. And if we locate the parking at the rear of the building, we're going to cut into the availability of green space for the use of the residents' backyards. I'll also say it means that we're locating the parking closer to the abutters. And, you know, if we're looking to try to mitigate any effect on the abutters, locating parking closer to them is not gonna do that. We've had the estimate of the increase in impervious surfaces. And I'm just gonna note that leaving the natural environment undisturbed, decreasing impervious surfaces, that is repeatedly mentioned within the site plan review as a goal of the city. So I think it would be consistent with that to ensure that that occurred here. So as with many zoning ordinances, this is of course not an original drawing that you have. This is from a 1995 American Planning Association author. And what it discusses is how to increase pedestrian traffic on commercial storefronts. That's where this originates. It is not intended as a safety measure for residential streets. The goal in implementing this kind of plan is to get pedestrians to walk in front of storefronts and spend their money. And I'm just gonna say this, the thought that this design originates from a safety point of view is not consistent with where this comes from. Here's another example of a close-up. And as you can see, it's clearly marking a pedestrian-oriented shopping street, which is not what this residential development is intended to be. Just a note again that this is an access driveway, not a street. And then, there has been a question about other comparable layouts. So this is the layout for Pinewood Drive. And as you can see, this is 52 parking spaces. They all back directly onto Pinewood Drive, which is a dead-end street. So we believe it's a very similar development. If we look at it pictorially from the air, you can see the parking spaces, parking in front of the residences, parking in front of the cul-de-sac. front of the residences, parking in front of the cul-de-sac. This is Crystal Lake. Again, we have parking in front of each building, and it is a townhouse-style development. Again, that's consistent with what we're looking at, a townhouse-style development, where each unit has an entrance at the street level. That's 27 parking spaces backing directly onto the, no, main area there. I would call that an access driveway again. And just some pictures of that. Kylie's Way. Again, the parking is backing out directly onto the access driveway. So those are some examples. So it's not, certainly not inconsistent with other development within the city. So this is just our summary. We're asking that you do permit up to eight spare parking spaces in front of each principal building. If you can make that determination, that will help us bring the plan to a final version, which the ZBA does want to see before we go in and finalize the special permit on that end. I am happy to answer any questions, but I think any site-specific questions, Trevor is the more knowledgeable person to talk to.
Mr. Director, anything?
First time I've seen a lot of this, so it's locked to a door. So Christine, can you go back to the Kylie's Way?
Yes. Did you want the map overview?
I'm not sure what you showed, but did you show the actual units, or did you show...
Yeah.
So do those have drive, do those have garages in the units, do you know? And so there are actually driveways up to the actual garages, right?
And parking in front of the garages, yeah.
Yep. Okay. The Crystal Lake Drive sample, that's a parking lot off of the main road.
Yep, so it has an access drive, just like this one does. And the parking, as you can see, is directly in front of the building, not in front of the garage. And we can look at the map overview for that. And that was Pinewood Drive.
Mm-hmm.
There.
With garages and driveways.
And parking on the street. Anything else I can go back to or answer your question on?
The point you made on the, where the APA page there, yeah, well, no, you don't have to go back to it, but that, so that's kind of a point I've been making all along. So if you, if you look at that, I don't disagree with you that that was meant more for commercial development, and also the paragraph that follows those diagrams, where it does mention the planning board may allow up to eight spaces in front of the principal building. Also, I would say, associated with commercial development. More so than residential. But it's always been the case that that's how we've treated residential development. And from a safety standpoint, I think it makes sense. And that's why we want to see the parking either on the side or in the rear.
So I understand you hold that opinion very strongly, Mr. Beauregard. I think there are negatives to locating it on the rear, and I don't see the positives of locating it on the rear where we're not on a street. We are on an access driveway that has raised parking, raised driving calming devices, as well as posted speed limits, and raised sidewalks for pedestrian use. There are many negatives. You're going to increase the traffic noise that's near the neighbors. You are going to increase the impervious area. You are going to make it less convenient for the residents of this particular development to carry their parcels back and forth. As people get older, that gets to be a real concern. In addition to which, you're going to cut into the space that could be used for a backyard for each of these residents, you're going to cut into the green space. If we have the parking located in the front of the building, it is masked on either side by the building, so that you have a large portion of that traffic screened from the abutters. And you don't have the interference with the backyard. And as I'm sure everybody heard at the last meeting, Mr. Beauregard and I disagree on whether or not it creates any safety. This is a driveway, it's not a street, there are not going to be people racing through, it is a dead-end road, and people have to back out of their parking spaces, no matter where we put them. You are not going to frankly get a lot of pedestrian traffic in the front of this building, and probably not throughout the complex. People are going to use their units, they're going to go to their cars, and they're going to play in their backyards. So I do see a lot of detriment to that. The concept that, I mean, you can't back out onto an access driveway doesn't make sense with the other developments. It's not supported by the origination of those pictures. Those were for development of economic activity by creating a pedestrian roadway. I am pretty sure we do not want to add a retail use here. It's not the purpose of this, this is residential.
Right, but we also have in our zoning that parking's not preferred in front, and it is supposed to be in the rear. And those drawings are there for, as an example. That's why they're put in. That's the best example they could find at the time. So that's what they used. As far as parking in the rear, being close to the abutters, I don't disagree with it there, but there are mitigation measures that will be used to offset that. Any parking lot with vegetation, guardrails, to ensure that there's no spill over from the site. And that's going to be the developer's responsibility. You know, it's an 11 linear, 1100 linear foot access drive that is going to act as a roadway into the site to all the units. And there's 52 units being proposed, that's a lot of car traffic. That's two cars per unit, mostly, you know, for the most part, and that's a lot of, that's going to produce a lot of traffic through that development. And having cars backing directly out into that access drive is a safety issue. It certainly is. I will also go on to say that the development that's being proposed has 52 units in it. Originally, the concept plan had 43. There's 10 more units in the, or nine more units in the proposed development, which I think also impacts the ability to put parking in areas where it's supposed to be. So maybe if it was relooked at and reduced to where the original concept was, it would help the developer accommodate the parking in compliance with the zoning.
So I appreciate the comments from the city departments. I'm just going to remind the board that they are the decision-makers, not Mr. Beauregard in this regard. I don't mean to say that disrespectfully, but the board members decide this issue, not the city department.
We are well aware of that, thank you.
The claim regarding traffic safety, I'm just going to say it again, is without documentary support because relying on the origination of those pictures, it does not support the traffic safety issue. The changes in the project, there have been requests from the city regarding the size of the municipal sewer, the qualifications on the roadway, and changes frankly in the financing market have dictated the changes that have occurred, which nine units are not allowed units for that to increase. It is the shape of these lots, more than anything else, that creates the difficulty in citing parking at the rear, which I still maintain is very inconvenient for the residents, and has a greater impact on the abutters. The finding necessary from this board in order to approve eight, up to eight, in front of each principal structure is simply that the proposed site layout is preferable. Not preferable according to the drawing, but preferable for any reason that the board plans appropriate. We do think that's the case here, and I would ask the board members to throw a vote on that simple issue.
I'm sorry, vote on what issue?
On the issue of whether or not they are willing to approve up to eight spaces in front of each principal building, as they are allowed to do by the ordinance.
All right, anything further?
That's it. Thank you very much for giving me your time today, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Tree. All right, gentlemen, what it boils down to us, for us, is do we want to adhere to the preferred design per the zoning ordinance, regardless of its original ordinance, its original origins? That's what it says now, regarding parking in the rear in the preferred design? Or do you feel that this is a compelling enough argument that this promotes a better site layout? What do you think? Mr. Bitez?
This is a public meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
So the public has a right to speak.
Yeah, we'll get to that. Mr. Cormier?
Obviously, Mrs. Attorney Tree is an advocate for her client, as she should be, she gets paid by her client. As the planning board members, we need to be advocates for the people or residents that might be moving in to this location. So we have to determine, as a planning board, what is the best option for residents moving in. And to be an advocate for safety, I believe the parking should be in the back, as I stated
Other thoughts, comments?
I think the same way. Parking should be in the back. I just, if I had to live there, I would have liked to go through the front door and tackle cars in the front, you know, my apartment. I just wouldn't want that. Going towards parking in the back.
Mr. Cormier?
I'd have to agree. I think the parking in the back for safety issues, for being able to back out into the driveway with an opposite backing into you, the looks of it, for being able to get into their units, carrying their groceries per se, instead of going into the individual, they'd still have an entrance to the rear. I would feel more comfortable with parking to the rear of the buildings.
All right, then let's vote on it. Think how it would work with this. Did you have something else, Mr. Beauregard?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't, what is the board going to vote on? I don't, I mean, you have a, you have a site plan review application in front of you with a plan, so that's what...
Well, I was carving out the parking issue separately, but since, to your, yeah, to your point, is we're already in site plan review, that probably isn't appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, the plan's the plan.
Yeah. No, you're right, you're right, I agree. All right, well, before we move on any further, at this point in time, I would like to ask for public comment. Is there any member of the public here who wishes to be heard in favor of this proposal? Is there any member of the public here who wishes to be heard in favor of this proposal? Is there any member of the public here who wishes to be heard in favor of this proposal? Hearing none. Is there any member of the public here who wishes to be heard in opposition to this proposal? Is there any member of the public here who wishes to be heard in opposition to this proposal? Was there someone?
Yes.
Ma'am, your name for the, and street address for the record, if you please.
Mary Schaffler, and I'm an abutter. I'm a two-open lane east Compton, but I also own a small piece in Garder.
Okay, very well, your comments, please.
And as your, the proposal you're talking about is just the parking issue, or in general, the site plan?
The site, the site plan. The whole thing. We were focused on the parking, but the real issue here at this meeting is the entire site plan, yes.
I have questions about the special permit issue. Is that already been decided, or is that still between ZBA and planning board, if there is going to be a special permit issued for this location?
Does the app want to address that, because I'm not really sure what the status is in front of the ZBA.
Nor are we.
So the, I want you to have to cream it up round. So the special permit in front of the ZBA only addressed the finding on the principal building. We delayed consideration of the special permit until we could come back to the planning board. It is still pending, it has not been resolved.
I find the site plan is very congested. If a special permit was to be issued, I think it goes against the character of the neighborhood. You have houses on West Broadway, you have houses on Deer Hill Road, and you don't have any multifamily homes in that area, and I think it is to the detriment of the neighborhood for the site plan that's being proposed. I have questions about like the elevation of the, of the, the site from the street level, West Broadway, and how, how high up the elevation is your housing going to go?
I can actually...
Which might cause problem with erosion and runoff and water issues. And there's been clear cutting out behind, I believe, that area, back up to the Route Two ledge area, and so there's a lot more water that's coming down since the cutting about a year ago.
Just a note, because this was at the last meeting, the clear cutting has been on some other lot, that is not on the lot that is before you...
Yeah, I'm not saying it's on, I'm not saying it did have clear cutting, yeah. But I'm worried about the water. And even like where the snow storage is, and that's going to be way up at the end, so you're going to put more water, more snow and water up there. So in the, after the winter, you're going to have more water problems.
So the roadway elevation is at elevation 980. The top of the roadway crest up here is 1,008, so it goes up roughly 28 feet, probably in that scene, 450 feet roughly. So 450 feet in is the highest point of the development, and then water kind of sheds to both the infiltration basin to the front and to the rear.
I don't see how it's going to go to the infiltration area in the, in the rear, when it's the type of structure.
So, go back to this. So roughly at this point, this is the highest point of the development right here. So anything from this point on this way, the roadway is shedding this way. And you have drainage cache basins here and here, coming into a drainage structure all the way down. Anything down below the roadway this way is captured by the swale right here, along the property line. And both... line, and both the drainage and swale run into this infiltration basin here, and so anything shedding downhill is captured by the swale, anything in the roadway is captured by the cache basins, treated, pre-treated in there, and then discharged into the infiltration basin there.
The congestion of the amount of units and the cars being, say this, you know, if there's two per unit, you're up to 100 extra cars, so I am concerned about, as being in Abutter, worried about the concentration in that area of so many, so many buildings, so many cars, that section of Route 2A has been a problem for safety, people coming in and out of the driveways, as it is anyway, over the years, there's been, you know, multiple issues on that. If there's an official traffic report that's been done, is that available for public viewing?
Yeah, I believe we submitted a traffic report as part of the application, so I think the city has that.
It was submitted.
And luckily where the roadway comes out, it does have very good site distance, it's at that point of the roadway, you can see either way.
The rise of the road is, and the curve of the road, it has been a problem, maybe from the Templeton side more so than the Gardner side now. You know, Deer Hill Road is all single-family homes, it seems like it's close to about the same size of property as this site is, and you only have on Deer Hill Road, you have, I'm not sure how many...
Six or seven houses.
How many?
Six or seven.
You know, under, say 10 houses or less on the Deer Hill Road, and now you're putting in this neighborhood, this concentration of buildings, I don't think it's suitable. That's all I have right now.
Thank you very much for your comments. And also for the third time, is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard in opposition?
The fellow right behind you.
Be helpful if I face the audience, sir, your name and street address.
Gary Roberts, Abutter, Stevens Way. I have a point to make about the traffic, I don't know what traffic study you had, but you, as a board, you need to know, they're gonna put in 49 houses on the other side, which is Templeton, but it has a major effect with what they're doing. You're gonna have a road in and out from their house, from their driveway, that's gonna be 600 feet from the in and out of another 49 houses going in on Baker Lane. You're gonna have almost 100 new houses with traffic at one of the most dangerous blind corners there is in the town. And I ask you as a board to just go and stand where they want the proposed driveway, stand there for five minutes and watch the traffic go by, you cannot see the blind coming from Templeton going towards Gardner, you cannot see the cars coming around the corner, and you have a, you're gonna have the same thing at Baker Lane, they can't see from Gardner coming into Templeton. So you add another 100 houses, not cars, 100 houses up there with 600 feet between the two driveways, and then you have their road, Oakwood, you're gonna have three exits within 600 feet of a blind corner. That is absolutely ludicrous to have, where the proposed driveway is the most dangerous spot to have the driveway. There's gonna be fatalities, there's gonna be multiple accidents there, especially when you add 100 new houses in that area. And we talked about the drainage, it does affect what they're doing, they clear cut the top of the hill, we're all getting flooded out, we've been fighting with them from, ever since they clear cut, the guy was not supposed to clear cut, he clear cut, he's flooding the whole hill down, right down to 2A. Now you wanna take out more trees on the steepest part of the hill before you hit 2A, you're gonna have, I don't care what you do for water retention, there's so much water coming down that hill right now, and it's not even the wettest part of the season. Ever since he clear cut, we've had major problems with water up there, it's all ledge, and the water just cascades down that hill and is flooding everybody out. But I please ask that somebody just stand where they propose that driveway and watch the car traffic, and you'll understand what we're talking about. And if they have to do it the same way on Baker Lane, when you have that many cars going this way and that way, you're gonna have unbelievable problems right there, you couldn't have put it in a worse spot. Don't take my opinion, go down there and see the site, go down and see the land, the way it grades, it grades all the way downhill, it's from our top of a hill all the way down, we're all getting flooded out right now, before they even start moving rocks over there.
Talking about the entrance for this development or the other?
Entrance for there, and Baker Lane's gonna be the entrance and exit for the 49 houses, which is only 600 feet from this entrance, on a curve.
Trevor, is the entrance area staked off at all?
Yeah, I'll bring it up, I don't think it's actually staked out, but in comparison to where the Eames, that old house that exists, they just tore down the barn, it's pretty much right across the street, like right to the, almost like right in line with the right side of that house. The results of the traffic study, eastbound stopping site distance, they calculated to be 400 feet, and the westbound, you can see roughly like 900 plus feet that way, which with the posted speed limit, is adequate per the DOT.
Speed of that's 40 miles, 40 miles an hour.
Is it 40 there?
Here's a blink in control like that, you know, set infrared sensor that measures the speed of cars going at least westbound, that should be at 40, 40 miles.
Did you have something further, Ms. Tree?
Just to respond briefly to the abutters raised concerns, you know, number one, this project is not just a simple clear cut, it has a drainage system that is extensive in there, designed to handle the water capacity, but also concerns about clear cutting would again play into why we think that it would be more appropriate not to locate the spaces behind the building, because we would have less impervious area, less issue with water drainage. Secondly, I don't really think this is, this is part of the site plan review, but if there is a larger housing development going in on the Templeton side, on the other side, certainly the one that we are proposing becomes even more consistent with the character of the neighborhood, which is developing into a higher intensive residential use. Thank you.
I have a question. Are you ever gonna ask the city to accept that as a road?
No, it doesn't have a formal right of way, it's an access driveway, it's all rental properties, I mean, typically when you propose like a private road or something like that, you still would have to put a right of way, you know, have, meet front setbacks and all that stuff. This is just a full-on site plan, so it'd be almost like if someone was building like a commercial building, it's just one lot, they're not individual lots or anything like that, the roadway isn't on its own lot, so the intent is for, you know, a management company to own it all the time, rent it out all the time, these units are not supposed to be for sale at any point in time, it's a rental community, and, so yeah, no, it is not the intent for the city to accept it.
There was another member of the public.
I'd like to speak, I'm Michael Bolivar, I live at 14 Stevens Way, I'm director of letter.
All right, sir.
I agree with what the last two people had said, as far as the, that other project they're doing, I think that's, it may happen, but they're proposing over 55 community lives, so they're all individual units that they're putting up, so they are still all single-family houses, and that's one of our problems, is we don't think it's compatible in the neighborhood. If you draw a circle around, you look at every piece of land all the way around that, the only one that isn't a single family is the Polish American Club, everything else is a single-family house, you're gonna have low-income rents going in, or you're gonna have rental units, and nobody out, they're all single-family, just nobody's, everybody owns their own building, so it really doesn't fit into the neighborhood, you have, the neighbors walk up and down the street all the time, so I don't feel that it fits into the first, the first thing that they have to meet on the special permit. Also, this is the safety issue, as Gabri mentioned, coming out on the streets, it is difficult, and I see the plans they're not showing, the extra six or eight houses that they just built, right?
Yeah, they don't, they don't quite show up after first...
Across the street, so yeah, that inch house you're talking, they go six or seven houses, I think probably six.
Those are the new ones that were planted in the east.
Correct, yeah, and some of those people, actually some of those people got into accident shit, pulling out of their driveway already, so. So like I said, that's my main thing, is it doesn't put the compatibility in the neighborhood, and the safety issue of the traffic coming on that street.
Where was that entrance gonna be for that 455 you're talking about?
They're talking about, they were talking about it on Stevens Way, but I don't know...
Baker Lane and Cottage Lane will be used.
Yeah, so down, down here, I believe is where it's coming in, right, this is Stevens Way here?
Yes.
Oh, Baker Lane.
Yes, this is Baker Lane here.
Yeah, so those pieces that are but, that other cul-de-sac that you got right in there, that's all where everything's being built, and it's, I guess mainly it's supposed to come out on Cottage Lane right now.
Yeah, Cottage Lane is actually right here.
There was a proposal to come out on Baker Lane, but I don't think it's gonna cost the guy too much money to do it, 'cause he has to, he has to make Baker, he has to make Stevens Way a public road, and it's not a public road, so. So that's my comments, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from members of the public? Stan will turn around and look.
No, I just asked that you go down and actually see what they're proposing, where they're proposing, let that through our garden force, because that is a heck of a safety issue right there, especially that many houses, I can't believe I put that many houses in that neighborhood.
All right, sir, your hand go up, sir?
Yes.
Your name and street address.
Robert Redaffler, two Oakwood Lane, in East Templeton, with a corner in Guyver.
All right, sir.
That little triangle there. You've been touting the 15 mile an hour speed limit, who's gonna be enforcing that? You've also said that it's a private road, so police are not gonna be up there policing it, it's just gonna be a suggestion for the residents to go 15 miles an hour?
Well, I mean, it's a local community, so it's hope that, you know, if you're a resident in the community, you'll buy, buy in, plus we're putting...
I don't expect people doing 80, but 15 miles an hour, if you've tried doing that, that's very slow.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons we put the race sidewalks in, and they're relatively close together, and so no one can really speed up and down that, especially in the area where the parking is proposed, so.
I'll believe the one I see.
Just so you know, like, we're talking, we're talking about our property is along the, as you face, the proposed property, we're to the west of it.
No, right there, that's my house.
That's our house.
So we own that whole L and property adjoining that as well, we but Baker Lane people.
So we abut at least two-thirds of this project?
And we do pay taxes and taxes.
I hope not much for such a small corner of London, that can't be developed on its own.
Well, there's no rules on schools.
All right, anything further from the public?
Mr. Chair, just to respond to, there was a comment made about low-market rents, just to know this project is market rate, and we've been very consistent on that from the beginning, this is not a low-income housing unit.
Is there anything stopping you from doing low income, once it's approved?
Market rent means that the owner charges whatever the market will bear, and I ensure that you will find that the costs in this project will prohibit the owner from charging a low, a low rent where they're not receiving a subsidy, so.
So the answer is no?
The answer is that this is not the intent, and it will not be the action of the project, and in order for there to be a subsidy, you'd have to go through a public proceeding that we're not going through. So no, the answer is no.
Very good.
Most take a long time to say no sometimes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bitez.
Did I ask if any of those units are slated to be rentals, or are they all gonna be drive-in?
Oh, it's all rental.
It's all rental?
Correct.
Uh huh, okay, that changes things.
All right, before I close the public meeting, do you think you or your client would like a continuance while you rework your plans?
So we really just came here today for a finding on the parking spaces.
Okay, I think you heard consensus from the board members, so that's, no.
Yeah, unless anybody would like to raise their hand as having changed their mind due to microscopic powers tonight, yeah. So, you know, I think we prefer a continuance to look at whether, you know, can we work, you've seen, you've seen what it's gonna become, so, you know, that's what the board is looking for, you know, would like an opportunity to revise and see what we can present that would be acceptable, as well as, you know, there are other questions that were raised by DPW that needs to be answered.
Yeah, and city engineers' comments, and, so, did you want to shoot for May? Will that be enough time, Mr. Engineer?
I would recommend depending on the extents of the revisions, which I'm sure they're going to be drastic.
Mr. Bowergrad?
I just recommend that's gonna be the case that we had, got something in writing tonight to request that extension.
So I'll be happy to hurry up, and if there's any concern about deadlines, we'll take care of that issue. And then, just because there are members of the public here who were at the ZBA hearing that the next meeting is scheduled for next week, I expect that what we'll do is, because the ZBA wants to see what is gonna be the final plan, so I expect that I'll be asking for that to be continued until after we resolve that before the planning board.
Very good. All right, at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this public meeting until, put on your glasses, until June. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded by the rural police.
Yes.
Mr. Bitez? Mr. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Cormier, and I'm also a yes, very well, we are, this public meeting is continued until June. Very good. Let's see, the registry of deeds, recording of plans yearly form, I think everyone already signed that.
Yeah. Can we get something in writing for you tonight, requesting the extension to June?
Yes, it's already by you. You want to know?
The board, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta have it, I'm sorry.
Just gotta get to my ZBA meeting.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Do you need a pad of paper?
And, yeah, yeah, we gotta have it. Next meeting, Tuesday the 14th. Guys, good with that? Very good. Thank you very much tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn.
I'll second it.
We'll all second it. My voice, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you very much, we are adjourned.